The Wednesday, September 17th, 2025 final budget hearing will now be called to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent reflection for our first responders and members of the armed forces, followed by an invocation by Minister Jack White from the Gifford Church of Christ. And Commissioner Airman will have the honor of leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance to our great nation.
Dear heavenly Father, it is once again we come to you with bowheads and humble hearts. We thank you, dear heavenly Father, most of all for your son, Jesus Christ, who died for us and died for our sins. We give you the honor, we give you the glory. We come just now, dear heavenly Father, asking you to bless us and bless each individual that's present here this evening, here for this meeting. We ask that you continue to bless our leaders here in this county, give them the wisdom, knowledge, and understanding that they need to lead thy people. We ask a special prayer for our men and women of the armed service. We ask that you continue to bless them and watch over them and also watch over their families, keep them from hurt, harm, or danger. We ask also a special prayer for our public safety servants, firefighters, EMT, and those who are in law enforcement. We ask that you will continue to protect them and continue to protect their families also. And we pray, dear heavenly Father, for our world leaders. We pray that our world leaders will come together to bring joy and peace throughout the whole world. We know that we are not perfect, but we know that thy son is perfect. If we follow the rules of Jesus Christ, we know that everything will be all right. We come now, dear heavenly Father, ask that you be with us, not just this day, but all the days to come. Now may the grace of our Lord and sweet communion of his Holy Spirit rest and abide with us forevermore. Let us all together say, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in saluting the best country in the world, the United States of America, by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming to the final budget hearing. We appreciate your attendance and appreciate the viewing attendants as well. And at this time, please have patience with us. You've noticed we're short-staffed with the absence of Commissioner Susan Adams. I now turn it over to the county administrator.
So, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the public. Tonight represents our second and final hearing, the adoption hearing for our budget for fiscal year 2526. The proposed budget is $598,868.44. That's a decrease of $72 million compared to the 2425, the current budget year, as calculated at March 31st of 2025. In terms of the difference between the beginning, this proposed budget and the beginning of budget of last year, we were at $598,868.44. Last year, we were at $524,719,875. The large increase in between the two, or between the beginning and the current, is we roll over, bring over cash carryforwards, and then we roll over the capital projects, or bring in the capital projects through the capital improvement element. So, just some highlights, just want to touch our tax roll. We've increased 8.8% countywide, 8.7% unincorporated area. The sheriff's funding, the recommended funding, this is the final number from this past workshop last week, is $6,861,517,000 or 8.7% increase. That is the reduction from the initial request of $14.6 million, along with a revised request of $12.2 million. So, the sheriff's proposed, the budget is $85,773,472. We did, you know, the state sets the retirement rates. In this year, we did see an increase. This is, I think, two years out of my three years here, seeing a pretty significant increase. We saw, so the retirement rate increase was $3.9 million countywide. That includes our constitutional officers. We also experienced a workers' compensation increase of just over $1 million countywide, including our constitutional officers. In terms of changes in our workforce, this budget does propose some positions. It's less than what was originally proposed. As you recall, we eliminated some at the meeting to provide additional funding for the sheriff's office last week. So, it does reflect net increase of 20 full-time positions, an increase of 1.25 full-time constitutional officer positions, for a total of 21.25, you know, positions. So, since we now have the hardcore numbers and we can present this, the sheriff's budget as a percent of the additional tax roll, again, the sheriff is, will receive, the additional tax rolls, $8,681,310,310 of general fund revenue. And that's what we're going to receive in new revenue as a result of the increased tax roll. The proposal is to, for the new general fund portion of the revenue for the sheriff's budget is $6,249,912. So, essentially, 72% of the new revenue for the general fund coming in is going to be allocated towards the sheriff's budget. With that, and with this budget, as a percent of the overall general fund budget, will be 53.1%. And you can see that the sheriff's budget increase compared to that of the Board of County Commissioners increase in orange in that pie chart. The general fund, the proposed millage is 3.5475 mils. That is, that's 6.69% above the rollback rate of 3.3250 mils. It's the same millage rate, but it does constitute a tax increase because it is above the rollback rate. The proposed budget is $156,981,193. Mr. Chairman, you need to open for comments, considering any proposed changes to the budget. We'll need a motion to approve the millage rate and adopt the millage rate resolution. Make a motion to approve the dollar amount and adopt the budget resolution. Turn to the board.
Thank you. At this time, is there any comments from the public? I've been giving ample opportunity and time. We now return back to the board.
Good evening. My name is Jill Collinson. I'm currently the president of the Board of the Humane Society of Vero Beach in Indian River County. In watching your presentation last week, one of the things I noted was the fact that there was a cut being made to the Humane Society based on the increase of Mr., of the Sheriff's Department funds. Later, I read in the newspaper that it was written down as Humane Society allocation. And I think I had a problem with the word allocation. And I want to make sure that you understand what I perceive of it and what you perceive of it, so that we're on the same page. When I look at an allocation, it's more of a gift. And at the same time, with Mr. Johnson and others, we've had, I'll call it a semi-contract, a MOU, of what we're paying back and forth. And I'm not going to debate whether it's right, wrong, or indifferent in this environment, but I am concerned that as people read that we get an allocation, that we're sort of like a small charity to you, rather than the fact that we're actually providing many services to the county. And I want to make sure that that's understood. I don't know what it was cut to. I've never seen those numbers. But I thought you might be interested in knowing that we had somewhere around 500 animals that came from animal control in the last six months. We had 300 that came from public bringing in animals. And we had another 150 approximately of owner surrenders between cats and dogs. Our current amount in the shelter or with fosters breaks down to be 163 cats, 110 dogs, 10 bunnies, two bearded dragons, and two donkeys. Our average return to owner rate is 30 per month. So, when you talk about an allocation, it sort of minimizes, in my opinion, what we're doing and what you've been receiving services for. And I just wanted to clarify that.
Anyone else? Commissioners?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the proposed millage rate of 3.5475, which is 6.69% above the rollback rate of 3.3250.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Airman, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I'll also make a motion to accept the budget as proposed of $156,981,193. I'm sorry.
Second. That's a motion by Commissioner Airman, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, the next one we'll move on to is the municipal service taxing unit, which is the unit that covers all the unincorporated area for the services we provide. The proposed millage is 1.1506 mils. That's 6.09% above the rollback rate of 1.0846. Again, we are maintaining the millage rate, but it does legally constitute a tax increase, but we are maintaining the rate as is. This is, actually, for both, this is the sixth consecutive year. The proposed budget is $56,348,983. Mr. Chairman, you need to open for public comments, considering any proposed changes to the budget. Make a motion to approve the millage rate and adopt the millage resolution. Make a motion to approve the dollar amount and adopt the budget resolution. Turn to the board.
Thank you. On the municipal services, is there anyone that wishes to speak at this time? That's just on the MSTU. Commission.
Mr. Chair, I move approval. The proposed MSTU millage is 1.1506 and is 6.09% above rollback for the rate of 1.0846.
Second. That's a motion by Vice Chairman Law, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chair, I'd also move the proposed budget is $56,348,983 for the MSTU.
Second. We have a motion by Vice Chairman Law, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Onto the transportation.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the transportation fund, the proposed budget is $27,757,555. You're required to open for public comments, considering any proposed changes to the budget, and then make a motion to approve the dollar amount and adopt the budget resolution.
Is there any members of the public that wish to speak regarding the transportation I haven't given ample opportunity. Board?
I move to approve the proposed transportation fund budget of $27,757,555.
We have a motion by Commissioner Moss, seconded by Vice Chairman Law. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously once again.
Mr. Chairman, do we need, I didn't hear the, I'll make a motion to approve that budget resolution.
And I'll second that. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Airman, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously once again. Now, we'll move on to Emergency Services District.
Mr. Chairman, for the Emergency Services District, this covers the entire county with the exception of the Town of Indian River Shores. The proposed millage is 2.3531 mils, which is 6.25% above the rollback rate. Again, while the millage rate is staying the same, the rollback rate is 2.2147 mils and does constitute a tax increase. The proposed budget is $73,585,471. You open for public comment, considering any proposed changes to the budget. Make a motion to approve the millage rate and adopt the millage resolution. And make a motion to approve the dollar amount and adopt the budget resolution.
Thank you, county administrator. At this time, is there anyone that wishes to speak regarding the Emergency Services Haven't given ample opportunity. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the Emergency Services District's proposed millage rate, which is 2.3531, which is 6.25% above the rollback rate of 2.2147.
We have a motion by Commissioner Airman, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously once again.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the proposed budget of $73,585,471 and adopt the resolution, budget resolution.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Airman, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously once again. Now, move on to land acquisition bonds.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is our land acquisition bonds from our 2024 bond issuance, the first tranche of $25 million of the $50 million authorized, approved by the voters. Proposed millage is 0.0610. The proposed budget is $1,843,432. Open for public comment, considering any proposed changes to the budget. Make a motion to approve the millage rate and adopt the millage resolution. Finally, make a motion to approve the dollar amount and adopt the budget resolution, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to speak regarding the land acquisition bond? Haven't given ample opportunity. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I would tell you, as of last night, we also had a meeting of the Environmental Lands Acquisition Committee, and we are working very hard. We've got some properties in the queue that we're looking at. We've got more that we're out there talking with willing sellers and people that are on the fence. So, a lot is happening with that right now with regards to that committee and trying to spend the $50 million as much as we can to gain as much as we can and yet leverage that money with state, federal, and private grants. So, we're on a roll right now. So, we hope to have something to the board, a preliminary, something in October, was kind of what the consensus was yesterday. So, just to let you know. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve the millage rate of 0.0610 and adopt the millage resolution.
We have a motion by Commissioner Airman and seconded by Vice Chairman Law. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the dollar amount and adopt the budget resolution with $1,843,432.
Second. That's a motion by Commissioner Airman, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're off to the aggregate, which no one pays.
Yes, this is just, this is the aggregate millage, but no individual homeowner pays it itself because it's all dependent upon what you're paying in terms of your property. So, the proposed millage for the aggregate millage is 6.1158 and is a 6.4% above the rollback rate of 5.7442. Just have to make that announcement.
Thank you.
So, the next is our solid waste disposal district. Just need to announce our 2526 proposed budget of $42,47,435. Mr. Chairman, you need to receive comments from the public, considering any proposed amendments, and make a motion to approve the dollar amount and adopt the budget resolution.
Thank you, county administrator.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anyone from the public wishes to speak regarding the solid waste disposal Haven't given ample opportunity. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the dollar amount for the solid waste disposal district, $42,47,435, and adopt the budget resolution.
We have a motion by Vice Chairman Law, we have a motion by Commissioner Airman, seconded by Vice Chairman Law. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Opposed, nay, as I voted against universal collection initially and have not changed my position on this. Thank you.
Motion passes three, two, one, with Commissioner Moss dissenting.
Yes, and this is the last one we'll be presenting tonight, Mr. Chairman, non-advalorm dollar budgets. Announce the 2526 proposed budgets for the various funds, specifically the special revenue funds of $48,803,821. There are other debt service funds for $500,000, our capital projects fund for $52,295,400, our enterprise funds for $79,981,565, and our internal service funds for $57,398,185. Need to receive comments from the public, Mr. Chairman, considering any proposed amendments and the motion to approve the dollar amount and adopt the budget resolution.
Thank you, county administrator. Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak regarding these budgets? Haven't given ample opportunity. Seeing none. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the dollar amount for the non-advalorm dollar budgets and adopt the budget resolution, as read by the county administrator.
Second.
We have a motion by- We have a motion by Commissioner Airman, seconded by Vice Chairman Law. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, on behalf of staff, I'd like to thank our department heads. I'd especially like to thank our office management budget and the board's leadership and guidance throughout this very unique budget season. With that, you know, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, staff, team, and thank you all for attending. This meeting is adjourned.